The pleasure to be here in the United States of America and to the Republic of Michigan. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I roll call, please?
Beerstead.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Okay, next approval of the minutes for the March 25th meeting.
I saw move.
Second.
First and second on the minutes, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next approval of the bills with Councilmember Bjork.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for the approval from the council and the comptroller of approval of bills of $2,338,370.92.
Second.
First and second on the bills, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, come on up. Everybody has two minutes.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you all so much for having us here today. My name is Taylor Stevens. I'm a teacher here in the district and a community member. I'm also a mental health first aid instructor. And I'm here tonight with an amazing team of individuals who range a wide variety of community members, NAMI representatives, CARES team members, county board members, parents, people with lived experience, and we are asking for your support. I know that one of our team members, Molly Miller, has been in contact with a few of you already, but we are starting a community response team. And that is in partnership with CARES, NAMI, and GROW, grassroots organizing of western Wisconsin. And our mission is, it is a volunteer-based community group that works to reduce the stigma around mental health and suicide prevention. And our goal is to partner with law enforcement, social workers, counselors, and community members to provide crisis intervention to individuals in times of need. We're imagining this to be a tiered support. So the first tier would just be like someone, it is a number that you can call, and it's a community resource, and there isn't a need for dispatch or any immediate assistance in that time, but it can help point the person in the way of resources for mental health. Tier two would be more community support, so someone trained in the crisis intervention team through the NAMI organization or the National Association for Mental Well-Being with the mental health first aid training. And then tier three would be more certified support, where tier four and five would be more of a public safety concern, so then we would involve law enforcement, hopefully trained in that crisis intervention team. So we are just here tonight to ask for your support in jump-starting this team and working with our law enforcement officers and our community members to get this up and running. We would love to sit down and have a meeting with stakeholders or discuss what this might look like. So that was my introduction to it. We do have a couple other representatives that will share why this is important to them, but thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Michelle Hansen. I'm the local board president for the National Alliance of Mental Illness, Sanfray Valley. We serve Pierce and Sanfray counties, providing advocacy, resources, and support to people in the community. I'm just going to speak to the need for mental health services, which I'm sure everybody is pretty much already familiar with, but I'll let you know what we're seeing. We provide support groups in the community. We have family support groups who have a family member who is struggling with mental health, and then also peer support groups. I'll tell you this, our support groups are busy, busy, and overflowing. Families in the community are desperate, desperate at trying to get help for their loved ones, and western Wisconsin can be a tricky place to do that. We've had a lot of closings of organizations that provide the resources and help for that. From a personal basis, I also respond to emails and phone calls for crisis and provide crisis counseling. And I have seen so many this year, so many this year, families who are struggling with a family member who is in a full mental health crisis and not sure what to do. And there's really not a lot of places for them to turn. We'd love to see more support locally so that we can help maybe de-escalate this before it goes to the point where we have to involve our wonderful law enforcement officers who are dealing with this on the frontlines every day. In the community, I've spoken with many organizations as far as like libraries, grocery stores, places of worship, they're all, they're contacting us and saying, "Help us." We are, they're starting their own mental health support groups. So we are just looking for, to look for some solutions for this. NAMI can't do it alone. No other organization can really do it alone. It seems like we're going to have to band together, so appreciate you hearing that assault.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Molly Miller. I'm the one that sent you all, all of you email kind of explaining the community response team. I was very pleasantly surprised with the enthusiasm and encouragement you responded with. It's a little bittersweet, I guess, because the need is there, and I'm speaking as a community member and as a person, I'm one of those loved ones of someone with a mental illness. So we've seen firsthand the struggles a couple of our kids have had, and we do, we have seen wonderful support from the community, and the school district has been great, law enforcement has been great, and we just want to keep going in that direction and just keep looking at it, so, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Troy Kuzlak, I've talked to a lot of you guys on the phone. It's about the bike path, proposed bike path. I live on Riverside Drive, there's a few of my neighbors here today. Our concern is the safety of the bikers on that hill. I don't think a lot of the people on this panel have really been on the property. My family's gone back a century here, excuse me, and I know the hills, I've lived there, I've hunted there. I'm a big biker, my neighbors are bikers. We love biking. But the problem we have here is the steep slope on Riverside Drive. You're proposing to put a trail behind an apartment complex so everybody sits and has a trail go by their personal property. I myself have a whirlpool, my neighbors have a swimming pool, I have another whirlpool, saunas. Fifty feet back, there isn't a flag that's marked 50 feet right now, they're all closer, because the train, you have to be closer. So there's only one way above there, would be on top. The only safe way would be if you came from that parking lot to get up on top and stay on the spine rather than down in everybody's backyard. There's no, there's nothing between us and them, and it's just, at this point, we kind of feel like there's encroachment. And I talked to Mr. Simpson, and back four or five years ago when the Foxes decided to sell, everybody all the way around Woodridge Drive, Riverside Drive got a letter, so they had everybody's address to let us know what was happening. All of a sudden in December, we started seeing flags in the woods, and I've lived there over two decades, and all of a sudden I see a guy in the backyard. I've never seen a guy in the backyard. So then I raised the question, neighbor sent me an email, said, "Hey, listen, there's something happening." I talked to Jeff, I talked to Sean, I've talked to Dan, I've talked to Diane, I've talked to Mr. Simpson.
Fifteen seconds.
We need to do, you people, you're making the decision for kids, you guys need to get on that trail and walk that train just to see what you're doing there. You have a lot of people that pay a lot of money for their taxes, and those northside lots are pristine. You put a bike trail there, it's going to be nothing but bike races in the Saturdays.
Time.
You just need to help us.
Thanks.
I'm Neil Jensen, also a resident on Riverside, Michelle and I, and so we're about seven years on that property, and we have come to rely on quite a bit of seclusion on our western boundary there. But we really don't have much problem with that, like Troy stated, the lack of information has been kind of an issue for me personally and my wife, because we didn't have any discovery. I really feel like going forward, we would like that planning to kind of include the residents that do border that, that planned trail. So that was my main thing, and also we've seen the distances that are plotted out, and the one honestly that kind of borders us isn't bad the way it is, we would just hope that wouldn't get any closer than that. And if there is a lot of terrain, I do agree with Troy too, that there is a lot of potential for somebody to go head over butt into somebody else's yard or something like that, potentially. Just wanted you to know that I appreciate any communication going forward.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jason Schreik, and I just want to piggyback on the previous speakers. I live on Riverside Drive next to these properties, and kind of share some of the same sentiments. I think the bike trail will be a wonderful addition to the community, and just kind of hoping that we could work with the city to perhaps set back the trails a little bit further from our property than 50 feet, which has been proposed, so maybe something like 75 to 100 feet would be, I think, more, you know, applicable for the situation and for our privacy and, but again, I think it's a great idea. We love biking, and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to the community. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, move on to consent agenda. Oh, God, I'm so sorry. We do have our chamber presentation. Forgot all about you guys, sorry about that.
You couldn't forget about us, maybe? Well, thank you for having the chamber here this evening. My name is Megan House. I'm the event and program manager with the chamber. For the past month, I've been serving as the interim CEO as we go through transition in our office with Russ leaving, but happy to bring to you this, today, Rosen Magnus is our new CEO coming on board. It's day two for her, so felt like not throwing her under the bus this evening with our fest. She gets to learn the whole scope of the festival hand-in-hand with us this year, so again, thank you. We work really closely with your public works department when it comes to festival season, and so we want to do our best communicating what our needs are with the city and keep you guys as great partners. So wanted to give you just a couple updates here, although it's not within the city request, kind of want to look at all of our signature city festivals. We have Bluegrass Bourbon and Brews coming up, April 25th through 27th. It's our premier music festival for River Falls. It's really a unique setup that I really haven't seen anywhere else, where we have 12 different venues, bands going all weekend long. I think we're up to probably over 50 bands throughout all those venues. Some are ticketed, but some are free for the community as well. So even if you don't feel like buying a ticket to come see the big headliner performances, there's something to do for everyone in the community during Bluegrass Festival. So we'll have, we do have one slight change to the festival this year. Our headquarters in past years has been at Tattersall, but there's a scheduling conflict, so this year we're actually going to be at River Falls Golf Club. So a little bit of change in venue, but we're excited to work with the new owners out there. It's a great environment, we'll have great bands out there as well. We'll also have some beer, bourbon, and spirits vendors as part of some of the ticketed offerings. You'll see shuttle buses going around town for all our ticket goers. We'll have free running continuously, continuously, just in a loop to our venues. And like I said, over, close to over 50 bands over 12 venues, so it's a massive undertaking, and we typically sell a little over 1,000 tickets, so it brings a lot of people to town. And all the bands traveling here too, we have some who are literally hitting the road for 10 hours and then performing, so it's kind of bringing some, some nice headliner names like Chicago Farmer and the Field Notes and Adam Grul and the Space Burritos, their names are fantastic. So Bluegrass brings a lot of funk to town, so very excited about that. And additionally, kind of a neat add-on this year, Hope Lutheran Church is going to host a bluegrass-themed church service on Sunday to tie into the festival that we already have going on. So really appreciate them stepping up and seeing a festival going on and really tying into it and being that support in, in River Falls. And of course, on Sunday, we have a free brunch performance at Junior's, so hope to all see you there after a packed weekend. So when it comes to the other signature festivals, we have, we have festival grounds going on a lot of times, but when it comes to the basic infrastructure of those festivals, we don't have any major notable changes for this year, which is kind of a nice thing. But before I go into some of those event highlights coming up, I just want to make sure we say thank you to the public works team here at the city, because they, without their help, these festivals wouldn't be possible with garbage cans, the tables, tents, all that kind of stuff. It's a huge impact to us, and we're very appreciative of that partnership. And also a little thank you to Kevin Westhouse for providing the livestream of both the River Falls Days and River Dazzle parades last year. That was something that, it kind of went away during River Falls Days when the local station stopped streaming, and so he was able to help us bring those back. And so getting the word out to residents in the community who might be homebound or just don't want to stand out in the crowds and in the hot environment, they get to enjoy those parades livestreamed, and we hope to bring that back again this year as well. So going into, we'll start kickoff with River Falls Days, we've made just a couple time adjustments that I want to touch on. So River Falls Days is slated for July 10th through 13th this year, same timeframe as past years. Thursday, the festival ground hours are 4:00 to 10:30, that's the same, but Friday night, we're going to extend those hours just by a half hour in the evening, and that's to accommodate the laser and light show that we're bringing back. So we need to be nice and dark. We'll have our headliner and then the laser light show, which if you didn't get a chance to see that last year, it was a special event that we were able to bring for the 50th anniversary, so bringing that back. But the audible gasp in the crowd when the lasers first came on was just, gave you chills, so we're very excited to be able to bring that back. Saturday hours will remain the same, 11:00 to 10:30, and then the car cruise on Main Street on Sunday. For the parade, we still plan on having a parade on Friday, same route, same expectations, but one of the things I'm really happy to share with you guys is that we've kind of got our stuff together in the office, and we've moved to an online application system, a little well overdue, but if you actually visit our website now, it's already active, and we've already received, without marketing, we've already received parade applications. So people get very excited about River Falls Days Parade, but we're excited that administratively we're going to be able to tackle that a little bit easier this year and also get the information out sooner. That's what we really want to aim to do, so very excited to be able to share that with everyone. And then we do have some, a little announcement that you'll see, we're not quite ready for it, but one of the things we want to focus on is community engagement when it comes to River Falls Days. So we have a little social media campaign coming up that's actually going to help us pick a theme for this year, so we're very excited about that, and really focus on that community engagement piece of what are ways we can interact more, that's one of our priorities. So a little bit of bad news first, so we're not able to bring back the lumberjack show like we did last year. The vendor has a five-year contract with another community, so I'm like, well, we can't really beat that. So however, like I alluded to before, we are able to bring back the laser light show on that Friday evening, and we recognize the lumberjack show. It was fantastic, free, family fun, and our goal is to still fill that gap in that Saturday afternoon timeframe with activities. So we actually have a few irons in the fire with some private sector partnerships to bring them to the table, but the more partners we're able to bring to the table to host activities, it'll enable us to have more capacity to add on. So if you, or any of you organizations who can, who are listening here, want to have a presence at River Falls Days, and you know, you just really would love to host a cornhole tournament, we can help be that partner. But there's a lot of opportunity out there, so we plan on making, adding family-free activities, but working with our local partners to bring those to life, because as a three-person office, we only have so much capacity, but we want to recognize that, we want to have festivities for everyone in all, all age ranges. Next up, we have Bacon Bash that happens September 19th through 21st this year, and this year we're adding a little bit of a musical twist to it. We're going to hone in on the music genre that we bring to the main stage, so we're going to be trying out some bacon bash and blues, had to stick with the Bs, we just love it. And based on attendance from previous years and reevaluation after this past year, you know, we had a great turnout, but we saw in that later, that 9:00, 10:00 o'clock hour, things really simmered down. So one of the things we'd like to do this year is cut back the hours to end at 8:00 PM, and then encourage people to go downtown. That's, happens during River Falls Days, and we usually see a flood of traffic on the footbridge, so by shutting down, we're going to encourage people to patronize all the folks around us as well. And we had some great partners come to the table last year. If you didn't have a chance to come, we have a new bacon business out of the Innovation Center called South Ridge Ranch Bacon, and they provided all the bacon you could imagine. So they were a fantastic partner, kind of really helped us focusing on bacon for the festival and the bacon eating contest, and we pardoned the pigs, so one was saved in the making, but really, really excited to continue working with local partners like that, where if they can tie into the event, kind of easy tie-in with bacon there. But we were able to expand a free tasting afternoon. I think we partnered with about 10 different businesses where for an hour, two hours, they were, did free samples of different things as it related to bacon. So really, again, focusing on those collaborative partnerships with a lot of our private sector folks. So very excited about that, and also plan to have the car cruise on that Sunday of Bacon Bash Weekend. Lastly, we have Chili Crawl and River Dazzle at the end of the year. This year it's slated for Friday, November 28th. It starts off at about 1:00, 1:00 to about 8:00 PM with a 6:30 parade start. And last year, we were able to add in the inaugural Santa Run on Main Street, which is almost exactly a half-mile loop around, but it brought out a great demographic of people. I think we had over 50 people register and show up for a fun run on Main Street. So that was kind of something new we added to the event that we plan on bringing back again, because people loved it, and we want to get people excited and get that Christmas spirit going, and it was nice, it was a concept, it was a test, but it was successful, so excited to bring that back this year. That just about covers it for me, but from the chambers end, our doors always open. We want to continue that great communication with you guys when it comes to our signature festivals on behalf of the city and represent the city of River Falls well, so thank you for having me here tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, now move on to consent agenda. First thing is a resolution approving the 2020, the 2025 to 2027 agricultural leases, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Kinnick Offroad Cyclist, and a resolution appointing Brooks Ostendorf as our new city forester. Anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number four.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve consent agenda items three and five.
Second.
First and second on consent agenda three and five. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Downing, you pulled number four.
Resolution approving the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Kinnick Offroad Cyclist. Mr. Mayor, I think that Kinnick Offroad Cyclists are a good faith community partner and have acted in good faith, and I believe you have the ability to work, and I believe they have the ability to work with our staff in developing a plan that is enjoyable for cyclists and is inclusive to our community as a whole. I do have a couple concerns, I believe you can incorporate, that we can incorporate as a group with them. I'll start with a simple one, and I think it's fairly self-explanatory. The city parcel on the map at Oak Ridge Road is likely not to see major development, but I just want to encourage Kinnick Offroad Cyclists to develop Whitel Ridge Highland Drive as their main entry point, even though it's fairly obvious that's, that's what they're doing, and not the city parcel, it's out of the way to begin with. I just want to encourage them to keep it simple, a neighborhood entry point with maybe two to three parking spots max, not to be used as a future primary entry point. My second point is, I want to encourage Kinnick Offroad Cyclists to keep the trail to 75 feet setback where you can, instead of 50 feet. I understand that can't apply to everything evenly, because stormwater and other things such as slopes, rocks, big trees, and easement itself, after reviewing this more with city staff. I need Kinnick Offroad Cyclists to work with our staff to achieve this, so we have an inclusive community in this sense. The reason I would ask this is privacy and respect for our residents. As you've heard today, the residents who live here want more privacy. 50 feet itself is fairly standard, however, this is a unique goal they have as a cyclist organization, and it's not the same as having a traditional neighbor next door. The 75 feet setback would be an improvement for privacy. This is achievable if we were to approach it like I have outlined and work with city staff to achieve it. The residents here value their privacy, so one thing you can do is, as Kinnick Offroad Cyclists, is accommodate them with 75 feet where you can, instead of 50 feet, all of which needs to be reviewed by city staff for accuracy and measurement and trail implementation as the process moves along. Those are my two major concerns. I would appreciate if the council could weigh in on my recommendations. These are not meant to be strict amendments, but they are directions we can give the staff to best work with Kinnick Offroad Cyclists to accomplish these and apply them in realistic ways. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else have anything else?
I'd make a quick.
You want to take it, make a motion on this, and then make it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to KORC Memorandum of Understanding for the Extension of Trails with directions as discussed by the city council from Whitel Ridge Park into the new recreational easement and parcel area.
Give me a second.
Second.
Is that what we have in front of us for action, though?
It's a resolution approving the First Amendment.
Okay, he read it off there. Oh, I get it, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I guess Councilmember Downing and I talked over the weekend about this, and I guess, I think we have some Cork representatives here. I find Cork to be an honest, honest, engaging partner for the city. I have every faith in them to do what's best. I don't know that I would agree, Councilmember Downing, about putting a, a distance on it. I think what I would ask Cork to do is to make every effort possible to move the trail as far away from, from the residents as possible. 75 feet, I, I know you kind of loosely put it out there, so it's not really codified, if you will, but if you can make every effort you can to push it as far away from the residents, I think that'd be advantageous for both the residents and the bikers. I think this is a good use for this land. It's a fairly passive use, rather than having, you know, housing built back there or something. This is a pretty passive use for the property. I think it will not be intrusive, and certainly unless you guys have a night ride or something with helmet lights on, you're not going to be out there after, after sunset wheeling around, so.
Well, there's snow, then.
I'm, that would be up to the mayor. That'd be up to the mayor. Why don't you come up and talk?
My name's Josh Walter.
Katrin Helverson.
And we are both board members on the Cork Club right now. Yeah, everything you said, we agree with, for sure. I wouldn't say we don't have night rides, though. They do happen occasionally.
Oh, okay.
It, it's part, it's kind of fun to do in the fall, but it's a very short window of time when that happens. Yeah, we want to be good neighbors, we appreciate the city giving us the opportunity to have this eight miles of trail that we already have and have worked on in the last 10 years, and we'll continue to do whatever, and I know, I think we're kind of satisfying desire by Tattersall Business to connect with them, so that's been the driving force, our understanding and service, and so, but yeah, we, we definitely are excited to add more trail, but we'll do it as good neighbors, and you know, if it's 75 feet is kind of what we're already expecting, or maybe even 100, but if we did, you might have a moment of 50, but we'll be mindful of privacy and things of that nature, and we'll be good neighbors. And, and I think the, the people, the residents will find that to be the case too, so in safety concerns, it's, it's, you know, it is mountain biking, so it'll be as safe as a mountain bike trail can be. But well-built, we follow the standards of building that are set forth by International Bike Trail Building Society, so we've all been, a lot of us, not all of us, but a lot has been trained in, so we will continue to make nice, safe trails that I think the city will be proud of.
No, just thank you again for your support and, you know, this relationship that we've been able to have with the city, it, it means a lot to us and the community that comes to River Falls to bike from all over, so thank you.
I'm pretty highly confident, the great partnership we've had, and you guys working with city staff will come to the best conclusion. and you guys working with city staff will come to the best conclusion you can out there. I'm not worried about it at all. So greatly appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add, I agree. I think they'll do a great job with it. And as Alderman Downing said, the 50 feet is a minimum, so would not get closer. But it's at 75, it'd be no closer. And I think you guys will look and say, wait a minute, this is invasive. We're going to move it up to 100. So I guess I trust your vision of what's happening and knowing that the city staff will be working with you, too, as you stake it out. And the neighbors will see things and it's like, hey, wait a minute.
It's changed, we get it, and that's, nobody likes it, you know, when it's changing your background. But yeah, we definitely are just happy to work with the city and I think we have good communication with them and continue that. Do whatever it takes to make sure we're putting a good trail that will add to an awesome trail we already have, and I think everybody will be happy in the end. And I don't think we'll be noticed that much by the neighbors. I used to live in Woodbury and lived by the Carver Park Trail System, if anybody knows it. And it was same thing, concerns, and it still has a few bumps, but overall, it wasn't noticed. And that was a big change in that, so I think the precedence is sure we'll do it. But for sure, we'll be mindful.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if all the councils spoke, I just have a couple of clarifications. So I don't, I'm not intending to undo anything you've all happily agreed to. There is no setback in this agreement.
Right.
50 foot was a guide, a visual guide for both the neighbors and Cork. There's no language in the M O U that establishes any setback. So I just don't, I don't want people to think there's some codification of setback. There's a couple of areas in the easement where there is not more than 100 feet of width.
Yep.
So a 50 foot setback would not provide a trail, right? And then there's, there's at least one area, kind of the westernmost area, that is connected by kind of an odd polygon to a very large lot, like a 600 or 700 foot deep lot, where that, I don't design trails for a living, but I would just want to make sure you know that there's, you have to consider the topography and the geography of the easement. So if the council intends to strictly enforce a 50 foot setback, we would want you to tell us that. What we're planning to do is continue to work like Cork have we, as we've done on others, and develop a detailed plan for the trail, which according to the M O U needs to go to the Park and Rec Advisory Board for final approval and the actual detailed plan. So I'm not, the council's full authority to dictate a setback. You can dictate sections you don't want to be used. You can dictate a number of things, but that's not what this motion does. And then recall that any public construction bids that we would do on our city parcel over 50,000 would come back to the council. Any conditions that would be placed on a grant, grantor would also be additional requirements. So there may be, you know, if the D N R has requirements, they may say you can't cut this tree down or you can't cut this one down. So it's not exactly threading a needle, there's a lot of space here. But I just, I want to clarify for the public and for the council that what you're doing is extending the M O U on the entire easement. And then we expect to work, staff expects to work in detail with Cork on where the actual plans, where the actual trails are going to go. We're also making the assumption that the trail development is likely to start more towards the water tower than, you know, the far west. But that also isn't codified in the agreement. They can, you know, this agreement would allow us to start wherever it makes some sense. And as, as many people have stated, the city parcel has significant slope. So it's, it's, it's hard to imagine a multiple stall parking lot fitting there well. I don't think any of you are anticipating that, but if, if the word trailhead or anything is used, it means access to the trail from other public lands or the public right of way. But I don't think we should envision very significant development there because it's just, doesn't fit very well. Again, if you wanted to actually restrict that parcel from development, that's not what your action does today. So I just, I want to be clear about what you're doing.
I think everything I've heard so far has been, we trust the council or we trust the staff and Cork to work together for the best possible outcome of everything.
Yeah, and as it relates to notification of residents, we do not have a system in place where we notify residents automatically of park projects or other things that are within so many feet of their property. That's something that council's discussed, but it's not been put in place. And so I'd encourage people that are interested to follow the newsletter. They certainly can contact me directly, they can contact council members. And I know the mayor is, you know, no, all kidding aside, mayor's always looking for park board members. So you can get your fingers right in the Play-Doh, so to speak. So I think I've covered, I just want to be clear that I'm happy to help you include any of those provisions if you think those are necessary, but they are not included in your current work in front of you.
Yeah.
Yep.
May I ask for some clarity on what amendment, on the amendment before us?
I think just, it's spread, it's with the new land.
It's giving, so from what, I talked with Administrator Simpson about this, and from what I understand, it's giving them direction where they can. Because like, much like he explained, there's areas where you can't necessarily do what you want, which is why you went to an amendment.
Yeah, so because we have the memorandum of understanding for the original land they have, now this is new land they have, so we're just expanding this memorandum to cover that land.
I was just concerned about the amendment.
Yes.
So can I ask a question? So if this goes through this process, does it come back here for some sort of a final vote?
It's unlikely to come back here for a final vote unless we are financially making a commitment.
It's got to stop.
It'll go to park board.
The park board, in theory, could, even though they have the authority to approve it under the M O U, the park board could determine that they want to send it back to council, but there's no automatic trigger to do that.
I would expect them to approve it or deny it. That's their job.
One other question, do we have a separate line item saying here, this is being billed? Like if we're doing mowing or picking up trash or cutting down trees? Is there a separate line item that this is getting billed to internally? So we have track of what this is costing us?
They, they do all that.
Yeah, we don't.
The mowing, we're doing the mowing and.
There's no budget line item for, specific to this property. We do track conservation areas. Sometimes we track those things separately. But we don't have a project code or something set up for the bike trails that I'm aware of, where if a park maintenance employee uses a mower for three hours, that they're charging it to this.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that's, you've heard this before from me. That's primarily because we don't want to send, spend 10 cents to track a nickel.
Yep.
So we're big enough that we have some sophistication, but we're small enough that you, we don't track everything down to that level of detail because then we're just, frankly, we're spending some money on tracking. That doesn't mean if this area was of specific concern to the council, we couldn't do that. I just wouldn't probably do that beyond this. It wouldn't become a whole new system of tracking, it would just be sidetracking for this.
Okay, sorry. Okay, anybody else have anything? I got first and a second. On number four, the resolution approving the first amendment, the memorandum. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinances. First one is a resolution approving the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for city assistance for special events.
So moved.
Isn't our first reading?
No.
No.
A second.
All right. Got a first and a second? Questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
So we're at, we're looking at number six right now, is that right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So we're, this is stating that there's no cost to the chamber. It's all our costs for putting up the electric, putting out the tables and that. I think the city, the residents need to have a good clue of what River, in particular, what River Falls Days is costing them. And I don't know if we have those type of numbers at this, at this point that we can share, but obviously, it's not coming free. And I, I think our residents, again, this is the city, a River Falls residents paying for this. It isn't the townships, it's not the counties, it's the residents of this city that are paying for all these improvements. So I'm just wondering if we have a clue of what the costs are for this.
It's in the memo.
Well.
Yeah, I think, I think we've kind of discussed this a little bit.
That's what we agreed on.
And the reason the chamber isn't charged like the downtown business leaders, and I think we've worked through that whole thing with them as well, is because the chamber is the city's designated room tax recipient. And we take 30% of that room tax to offset these charges. Now, I don't think for a minute that 30% of room tax is defraying 100% of our costs.
Yeah.
I do also think that this will be a discussion item at a different council meeting or a council retreat, I believe, for us to.
Yeah, Mayor and council, so you do have an estimate of the, of the fees that are being estimated if we were going to charge them, what your fee schedule is. So for each event, for example, River Falls Days, the estimate is nearly 12,000 for, for public works labor alone. And then picnic tables, street sweeping, garbage, other things. Does not include any staff coordination, so any participation by city staff members on subcommittees or committees. We haven't gone to that detail either to project code those. So there's additional costs beyond this. But as, as Councilmember Morris said, indicated, we use some of the tourism money that we, the city retains, and that's put on this. And then, as you've also indicated, there is going to be an upcoming workshop on festival costs and you all will help us understand if you want to continue the practice, which is for select events in the community that you have determined or have citywide benefit, community-wide benefit. You've waived the fees and you're doing that by approving these actions. And you can also not do that if you want to not, if you want to amend any of these actions, you can, you can ask the chamber to pay those, those fees. So that'd be up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I just have to say, I agree with Councilmember Morris said on this. Having something like that's more appropriate at a council retreat.
Sure. Yeah. I just, the reason I brought it up, I just wanted to make sure it's out there publicly, so people watching this or reading the newspaper realize that it's discussed and not just blindly gone forward.
Right.
Anybody else have anything on this one? Okay, you got first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven is a resolution approving Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for noise control exemption for special events.
So moved.
Second. Okay, first and a second on that, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next one is a resolution approving Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for open container exemption.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second on that, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And last one is a resolution approving Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for street closure for special events.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we go on to comptroller report.
Thank you. The comptroller's report for March 2025. General fund revenues through the end of March were $3,722,263, or 27.8% of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in March included $36,444 in building permits and $31,000 in miscellaneous, which was insurance for police squad loss, and $35,000 in grant revenue. Expenditures through the end of March were $2,859,251, or 21% of total budgeted expenditures for the year. So as of March 31st, 2025, net revenues over expenditures were $863,012.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, next go on to administrator's report. Anybody have anything for Scott? Scott?
A couple of things. First, on the comptroller's report, in case we, anybody reads that and thinks we lost a squad car. We didn't lose it, a deer destroyed it, so, which I think was on a mutual aid call out of town. So we'll continue to help our neighbors, and the deer will get in our way sometimes. So that was, so we know where the, we know where that squad is. But we did get a lost payment from the insurance. I also want to make sure, take time to recognize that Councilmember Miller is going to be moving on to, I don't know, greener pastures? Is that what you would say? Not to offend any of you sticking around, but appreciate the opportunity to work with her. I know I speak for staff to say we appreciate thoughtful questions and the support of the work that we do and the ideas for improvement. And we wish you the best wherever you go. And so appreciate your efforts and community service. Especially elected office is not easy sometimes, so appreciate you taking that on for the community. So, and you were my, my rep, so.
I know.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Anybody have anything for Scott? Okay, next we go on to, I have a couple of good news stories. The Hoffman Park Campground opens next week on Tuesday, April 15th. The campground has 15 RV sites and five 10 sites available to reserve. For anyone interested in reserving a campsite for this year, you can do so on the Parks and Rec website at riverfalls activity reg reg dot com. Next thing is congratulations to the University of Wisconsin River Falls Women's Hockey Team. They won their second straight Division III national championship on March 30th. The Falcons beat Amherst 3 to 1 in the championship game on the U W R F campus in front of a sold-out crowd. River Falls was proud to host the championship for the second year in a row, and we are honored to welcome visitors and fans of the other schools to our town for the event. And then speaking of River Falls Athletics, the baseball team returned to town for the first time since 2022. The Falcons baseball program was reinstated this year, and U W R F held its first home game in River Falls on March 28th against UW Stevens Point at the First National Bank of River Falls Field. This doesn't happen without the support of this great community. So thank you to all who played a role in bringing college baseball back to River Falls. And then I'd like to, since we mentioned Brooks Ostendorf as our new city, as our new city forester, I'd like to introduce him to everybody. Brooks is actually our new conservation and parks manager plus city forester. So if he wants to come up, and he's going to actually read us the Arbor Day proclamation. Come on up, Brooks.
Thank you for having me. Happy to be here. So Arbor Day 2025. Whereas trees are a vital resource in the city of River Falls across Wisconsin, the nation, and the world. Whereas trees help to combat climate change, conserve energy, filter our air, and intercept stormwater runoff from entering our waterways, create jobs through a large forest products industry, provide wildlife habitat, and make our homes, cities, and countryside more livable and beautiful. And whereas, human activities along with acts of nature threaten our trees, creating the need for concerted action to ensure the future of our rural and urban forests end. Whereas, each year in late April, Arbor Day is celebrated as people across the country pay special attention to the wonderful treasure our trees represent and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our forests. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brooks Ostendorf, Conservation and Parks Manager of the city of River Falls, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, to be Arbor Day in the city of River Falls, Wisconsin. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to become more aware of the importance of trees to their well-being and to participate in tree planting programs that will ensure a healthy and green city and an inheritance for future generations in River Falls. Did I read the last part?
You can if you want.
Okay. Given under my hand and seal, the city of River Falls is 25th day of April 2025.
Thanks, Brooks.
Thank you.
Okay, then I have a couple of appointments I'd like to make. For River Falls Housing Authority, I'd like to appoint Lori Larson through December of '29 and Holly Jones through December of '29.
I make a motion, we accept the mayor's appointments.
Second. First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thanks, guys. Okay. I got rooms. You got one?